I have nothing. Darcy, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of report ads.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, June 25th, the Library JPA met. We talked about the budget for the system. And I'm representative on the JPA from Cupertino. I think they're doing a good job. I asked about additional protections due to the COVID crisis. And they stated that they actually, within the then-current fiscal year budget, because their year goes from July 1st to June 30th, they were able to purchase the requisite supplies for responding to the COVID crisis. And so they're within budget and they're looking to streamline that budget in the upcoming fiscal year. So I think they're doing a good job there. I'm now on the nomination committee for this board, which governs the library system for Santa Clara County. And what that nomination committee does is that it selects some recommendations every year for the chair and vice chair of the JPA. A little bit earlier than that, about a week, on June 19th, the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority Subcommittee on Selecting the New Executive Director met. And we provided some parameters for consideration. They have now issued their brochure and are going forward with the selection process for their nominee. The Policy Advisory Committee or PAC of the Valley Transit Authority did not meet last month. It is also canceling its regularly scheduled meeting, which was supposed to take place, I believe, this Thursday for July. However, I did get a little bit involved with some of the 85 corridor efforts. Our city staff has set forth a proposal, or at least has explored the possibility of perhaps utilizing the median 85 for some form of transit. It won't be traditional transit, the more long lines of a dedicated shuttle bus lane going on either side. At the very least, something to preserve the fact that $350 million allocated for transit in the median of 85. And we were seeming to get a bit of pushback from VTA with regard to possibly reallocating that for express lanes and possibly moving that away from the median to invest in bike lanes, for instance. Of course, that wouldn't cost nearly $350 million. And it also ran in derogation of the express language of Measure B. So we have issued a letter, a joint city letter between several city managers to the VTA with regard to that. Just letting people know that, you know, we're not going to stand by on that. So I was working a bit with Councilmember Stinks, who is our representative on the Policy Advisory Board for the 85 corridor. And so we were able to make some pretty successful headway, I feel, in terms of getting our message out there. We talked to Mountain View as well as Los Gatos representatives. And this past week, yesterday, we spoke to Vice Mayor Jones, who sits on the VTA Board of San Jose, as well as a couple of staff members from VTA. So I think the message is pretty clear. You know, we want to be able to preserve our possibility of having successful transit in the South Bay and inner valley instead of just saying all of the investment go into San Jose and, you know, things like opening up two bart stations recently, one in Milpitas and one in Ariessa, whereas us, you know, historically in the West Valley, we just have had no transit investment. So when we finally get the money, kudos to Councilmember Stinks for all of his efforts several years back, on securing that in Measure B, we just want to make sure that we follow through with that. So that was some VTA-related activity in this past several weeks. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Oh, I actually forgot. I did have one thing. We had our Legislative Review Committee. We did take positions on a number of bills, including, let me see, SB 902, opposed unless amended. SB 995, I believe it was support. 1085, oppose. This is all in our agenda that people can read. I'm not going to go into reading what each bill actually is. 1120, 1385, oppose, oppose. And there are some new bills coming up. We're having another meeting, I believe, at the end of this week. And Councilmember Chow can go into this further if she wishes. But that's the only thing I had in the last two weeks. Leon, would you like to go now?
No. Yeah, don't really have much to add. Yeah, there are actually a lot of bills still being pushed through the Assembly and the Senate under this situation. Yeah.
I did just read or heard on the radio today that because some members of the legislature have been tested positive, that there's some, that the legislature is not, that they're not going to meet. But I'm not sure exactly what's going on there. Anyway, Rod?
Thank you. I really appreciate Darcy's initiative to schedule this meeting. It was primarily to spin up Chappy, who started when we originated the 85 PAB. He was San Jose's member. I'd appealed to Sam to put on somebody who was actually interested in a forward vision for the corridor. And we had Chappy, who was very good. He's now graduated to the full VTA Board, so he's a very important person. And so I just, hats off to you, Darcy, for that. Sam then put on Sergio Jimenez, who was great. And then more recently, we have Johnny Camus, who just wants express lanes. And so he doesn't seem to understand that you can get at most 1,500 vehicles in an express lane, and that isn't even one tech campus' worth. So I gave a report out on the last PAB at our prior council meeting. The next one is going to be on Monday. We have another one on the 24th of August. And then supposedly, we're going to formulate a formal recommendation and vote on it at the end of September. We had 25 very active vocal proponents of transit. A lot of young people show up from many cities on the corridor. And I'm hoping that we will continue to have robust participation, demanding that we be included in, you know, the transit network in our area. We know things are going to come back. It's going to be a new normal. But we can't, if we can't fix this problem, our residents are going to suffer for decades because, you know, the traffic, the traffic that doesn't get accommodated in the corridor will flow out onto our surface streets. So we need a high-density solution. We need it both in the 85 corridor as well as on the 280/ Stevens Creek corridor. So I look forward to this council continuing these efforts after I'm done. But hopefully this year, we'll have a recommendation with the VTA Board. And thank you again, Darcy.
Okay, John, you have anything?
No, the only meeting would have been the Valley Water, but it was not held because of the COVID.
Okay. Let's see if any...
Can I remind everyone that there will be a community forum, the second one on policing, with the participation of the school district tomorrow at 5:30?
Okay.
I attended the first one as an audience. It was great, a lot of information there. So I welcome everyone to attend the second one. You can send in questions beforehand.
Okay, we are on to the consent calendar. Did anybody wish to pull anything from consent? Looks like a short...
I would move the consent calendar.
And I will second. Can you conduct a roll call vote, please, Kirsten?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Stinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. We are on to item eight. The Municipal Code Amendments to Regulate Short-Term Rental Activity in the City. A new chapter, 5.08, short-term rental activity is proposed, and amendments are proposed to Chapter 3.12. Transient occupancy tax, Chapter 1908. Definitions, 1912 Administration, 19.20. Permitted, conditional, and excluded uses in agriculture and residential zones. And Chapter 19.120, home occupations of the Cupertino Municipal Code. Application numbers, MCA 201802. Applicants, the city of Cupertino, and the locations for citywide. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Hi, sorry about that. So good evening, councilmembers and everyone else. I will be discussing the short-term rental ordinance with everybody. I do have a presentation, so I will show my screen. And can everybody see the presentation?
Yeah, I think you want to put in presentation mode, Eric.
Oh, sorry.
Slide show, yeah.
All right. All right, so this, I'll be discussing short-term rental ordinance. So some background on the ordinance. So pre-COVID, we did have roughly 400 short-term rentals in the city. Post-COVID, running the numbers, and lately, recently, we have around 240. Currently, short-term rentals are allowed as home occupations. Property owners or leaseholders must be the primary resident and be onsite during the use of the short-term rental. The number of transient guests is limited to two or fewer. And all transient rentals must be in incidental use. And all short-term rental operators are required to remit TOT, which is at 12%. So as part of the outreach, the city did do a community survey with 140 responses. We had an outreach meeting where we sent out roughly 25,000 postcards with 26 people in attendance. We did go to Planning Commission. And first time in November 2018, we received a 401 vote. We went to city council in the study session of April of last year. We've also had significant outreach with certain platforms, including Airbnb and Expedia Group. And we did our normal noticing for the item. So at the city council study session, we did discuss the several items, including the maximum number of users, the short-term rental activity in kind of townhomes to allow those types of uses, restricting guest activity, so restricting the number of guests, incorporating quiet hours and prohibiting commercial activities. We also looked at regulating parking. Our ordinance requires the property owners have minimum required parking, provide one onsite and parking space, maintain a record of license plates for all short-term rental guests. We also went into the revocation process. So we provide objective standards for revocation, such as registration by false means to willful violations within the last six months. And there's several ways you can have willful violations. We also require the, we also implemented regulations on hosting platforms, including the payment of TOT and verification of valid registration number prior to booking. So going into proposed STR regulations, we did include some new definitions. So host means a person or people who offer their primary residence as short-term rentals. Hosting platform is a person or entity that provides a means to rent. An STR hosted stay is when the host is present during the stay. Local contact is a person designated by the host who shall be available to respond to a STR complaint within 60 minutes and able to take appropriate action to resolve said complaint. Short-term rental means any legally permitted dwelling unit or portion thereof made available for rent on a transient basis. A transient generally exercises occupancy for 30 days or less. And then unhosted stay is when a host is not present. For the proposed STR regulations on activity, we are allowing them within the primary residence but not allowed on an ADU. There is a limit to one agreement per night. So one per parcel. You can't, you know, have multiple listings, it's just the one. No commercial activities, weddings, corporate events, parties, that kind of thing. Hosted stays are unlimited. So when the host is present, there's a limit to that. Unhosted stays are limited to 60 days per year. The number of guests is based on two times the number of bedrooms, with a studio having one bedroom or two guests. Every short-term rental is to provide a guest manual. The guest manual is to have information on noise policies, quiet hours, trash collection, and parking. Parking, the short-term rental must have the minimum required by zone and designate onsite parking. They're also implementing, we also implemented quiet hours between the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Now for registration. As part of the registration, the applicant would provide the following information. So host's name and contact information, property location, site plan and/or floor plan with the STR location. The acknowledgement of compliance with the city's requirements, consent to inspection, local contact, proof of residence. So this proof of residence, we give a lot of leeway to staff, but looking at getting information such as the current property tax bill, assigned lease, vehicle registration, W-2 paycheck, something of that nature. The identification of off-street parking, HOA and/or property owner approval when it's not the property owner, and proof of TOT remittance. So we did include a revocation process. So revocation may occur for any of the following reasons. Registration obtained by false means. Short-term rental being conducted in violation of local or state law. Two willful violations within the preceding six months. The STR has caused or will cause serious threat to human health or public safety, and consent to inspection is not provided. So the process is, for revocation, is notice of pending revocation or suspension is given to the STR operator. There's a 30-day to dispute the grounds. And then 30 days after submitting all information, a decision will be made. Appeals for that decision may be filed within 14 days of that decision, hearing within 30 days, and the hearing officer will make the final decision. So we have an independent hearing officer to hear these appeals for the STR revocation. So proposed STR regulation for the hosting platforms. So we are able to regulate the hosting platforms to an extent. So we are asking for hosting platforms to be responsible for collecting TOT, also maintain a three-years' worth of records. So indicating history of all STR reservations, payment of TOT, the type of stay, hosted versus unhosted, and length of stay, the number of people per reservation. We also ask for the prevention of non-compliant STR booking. So every hosting platform would be required to have a permit number from the city. So that would be unique to the STR. If the STR does not have that number, they're not supposed to be listed. And with platforms such as Airbnb, we've gone into some discussion with them removing non-compliant short-term rentals within roughly five days once they get their tools up and going. We also have some other municipal code amendments of clarifying some definitions and processing a permit application and revocations as well. So going into the enforcement. This is something where we, staff has worked with the city manager's office, city attorney's office, and code enforcement to kind of get into the process of how to deal with ad actors. So currently, short-term rentals are refamulated use subject to the regulations that I mentioned earlier. As proposed, STRs are prohibited unless registered and compliant with regulations. There's a big difference now. What the new STR program proposes is to make the conduct of STR activity prohibited by default unless the STR operator has registered with the city. This means that any unregistered activity can be more efficiently and practically acted upon as a violation of the code. In addition, the new STR regulations provide a robust means to deter potential negative secondary effects that may be generated as a result of the short-term rental activity. So through this shift in regulatory design, the city will have more leverage in effective regulating short-term rentals. So current enforcement, so one thing to understand is the current enforcement resources. As of right now, there is one full-time code enforcement officer within the Community Development Department, who in addition to short-term rental enforcement, provides enforcement support to many other areas of the code. Current enforcement of STRs is conducted on a reactive basis as complaints are received from the public. In order to ensure adequate and effective compliance with proposed short-term rental programs and to address any associated public nuisances, it's important to consider the capacity of staffing, particularly code enforcement personnel, and what additional resources will be needed to achieve compliance expectation of the city and the city council. So enforcement approaches, depending on expected outcome enforcement, can be done at three different levels. There's proactive, semi-active, and reactive. So proactive is the most intensive approach, tending to ensure the highest level of registration compliance, both initial and ongoing reactive annual inspections of existing registrants and providing ongoing reactive response to public nuisance complaints. And there's semi-practive, which aims to provide satisfactory registration clients with rate of known STR operators, while also providing an ongoing reactive response to complaints. And then there's reactive, which would maintain essentially the status quo and direct staff to enforce only as complaints are received for registration and compliance violations. So this is a table that was, that is in the staff report that shows the different levels of costs associated with this. So we have contracted currently with a software company that helps identify as short-term rentals. So we know kind of where they are. This third-party monitoring can also provide additional tools, such as doing the kind of initial legwork of enforcement, sending out notices and doing some registration for the city. Then there's, you know, another staffing associated with it. So that gives us more staffing, sorry, for that to help out with doing the different levels of enforcement that I mentioned earlier. And there's different, you know, costs associated with that, or those different levels. So in terms of STR implementation, you know, it's unclear the impact shelter in place will have on STRs in the long term. As I stated earlier, there has been a significant reduction in STRs at the moment. We had 400 back in February and then about 240 afterwards. So a pretty significant drop. So we do recommend a delayed operative date. Six months after normal travel is allowed to resume. So this allows for three months for the STRs to resume operations, stabilize, and analyze to understand how many really STRs are going to be operating. Staff will then be able to provide fee options for council to adopt. In terms of environmental review, the projects exempt through very provisions of CEQA, Section 15378, where no potential for resulting in physical change in the environment, either directly or indirectly. 1506-1B3 and 15304, where it can be seen with certainty to have no possibility of significant effect on the environment and because the ordinance is a minor alteration to land use limitations. So the next step, so the first reading of the ordinance, and then the second reading, the schedule for July 21st. And this is the actions of Planning Commission recommends. 401, waiting to have the city council adopt the proposed draft ordinance. And staff is here to answer any questions regarding the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. I had one question on a slide. You said that you couldn't, if you have a primary house and you have an ADU and you live in the primary house, that you are not allowed to use the ADU as a short-term rental? Did I get that right?
Right. ADUs are not permitted, as proposed, to be short-term rentals.
And the reason for that is what?
The idea with ADUs is always to work with, to provide long-term housing stock. So if we give that availability of ADUs to be short-term rentals, there is some concern that they won't be really solving the housing issues that they're meant to resolve, which is, again, provide long-term housing solutions.
Yeah, I understand that. Although in most cities, you know, if you buy a house with a cottage in the back, you know, you are allowed to live in the main house and rent out the secondary unit as a short-term rental. Yeah, I would not be in favor of preventing that. You know, ADUs, and I think the person that spoke regarding the expense of building an ADU, he was spot-on. You know, I've gotten an estimate, it is extremely expensive to build an ADU. And it would almost be impossible to make it financially viable if you could only do it as a long-term rental.
Also, as a other note, the AD ordinance actually already prohibits short-term rentals from operating. It's just added language in this ordinance as well.
Okay, so if we wanted ADUs to be able to be used as short-term rentals, we'd have to change that ordinance as well?
Correct.
I see. Okay.
I expect to add, Mayor Sharp, this is Sarah Clark. State law also prohibits the city from allowing short-term rentals in many kinds of accessory dwelling units under the new law that became effective in 2020. So while the city does have discretion to allow short-term rentals in certain types of what we refer to as non-streamlined ADUs, the city actually cannot allow short-term rentals in many other kinds of ADUs.
Okay, so an owner could build an ADU, live in the ADU, and rent out his house as a short-term rental?
Yes, that would be permitted.
Okay, and that would still not provide the, you know, any more long-term rental housing? Okay, I got that. Yeah, well, that was a great presentation. Now, so do you think if we adopt this, it would have given us more leverage to do something about the situation we talked about earlier tonight on Sunrise?
I think it provides a lot more regulation as to how to deal with short-term rentals. It provides for very clear guidelines for the rules, the revocation, registration. In terms of processing, how this would impact short-term rentals, we do have our senior code enforcement officer, Philip Volcom, who probably better answer to how this would impact code enforcement.
Okay, now that's okay. Oh, but getting back to my previous thing. If it's a non-streamlined ADU, then the state does not prohibit its use as a short-term rental. Is that true?
That's correct. The city would have discretion in that instance to allow short-term rentals.
But currently, our discretion is to not allow them?
The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to not allow short-term rentals in any ADUs, in part because of the difficulties of long-term enforcement in keeping the distinction between streamlined and non-streamlined ADUs understood by the city and its staff, among other reasons.
Okay, no, no. My question was, right now, regardless, if someone builds an ADU, regardless if it's streamlined or not, it cannot be used as a short-term rental?
That is the current ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, I think that was the only question I had. Would anyone else like to go?
Yes, I would.
Okay, go.
Should we have the public comment, though?
No one from the public has raised their hand to comment. Oh, there goes one person. Okay.
We need to ask clarifying questions first, though.
Yeah, yeah, first let's ask the clarifying questions, then we'll go to the public. Go.
So I'm interested in, yeah, if we go back to the case that we talked about during oral, well, that callers presented this with during oral communication. oral, well, that callers presented this with during oral communication, what tools would this give us that we don't currently have? That's one of my questions. And I'd like to direct that to code enforcement as well as the sheriff. And is this enough? Or do we need to consider stepwise, a series of really stronger measures to get this under control? I mean, this is, what we heard earlier is completely unacceptable to me. I can't imagine that, you know, we let the situation go on another week. It's outrageous. I would be completely floored if I had this going on. I guess too bad that we've only heard about it now, but can, help us out here, is what's being proposed gonna, going to allow us to cure a situation rapidly, or ought we be considering stronger measures? Hi, Philip.
Hello. Hopefully y'all can hear me and see me fine. But Philip Wilcom, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. So the large answer to your question is yes. This proposed ordinance, as Eric mentioned in the presentation, is a night-and-day regulatory structure, meaning the leverage is now, or would be significantly in the favor of the city versus what we have now, unfortunately. Because the foundation of the regulations, now it is currently a permitted use as a home occupation and subject to the limitations in our municipal code and how we interpret it. What is proposed would by default make it a, the STR activity prohibited, subject to someone registering, or in a sense, getting a permit from the city. So that sort of turns the leverage on its head and gives the city back the ability to regulate this in a more efficient manner, in addition to the numerous robust regulations that are accompanying what I just mentioned, in deterring and effectively dealing with any public nuisances associated with non-compliant behavior.
And good evening, council. This is Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager. And just to kind of speak to some points that will make our proposed regulations much stronger, is that there's a requirement to have a local contact that can respond to any incident within 60 minutes. And if they fail to do that, that's a violation. There's also revocation of their permit, and without the permit, they are not allowed to continue operating. And then in addition to that, we have a regulation on the platforms to then delist any not permitted STR. And so with all of those combined, we have a lot more leverage to stop a bad actor.
Okay, does the sheriff have any particular comment? If there's still wild parties happening, do we, do we have, are there any more suggestions about what we put in here to, to keep this, to keep, yeah, to keep order in our city?
Good evening, councilmember Singh. So, you know, in the last few years, we have had calls related to short-term rentals, and we have had problems where we've had large parties. That's the number one complaint, is that we have too many people in a home that was rented for a day. And so the problem that we have is that oftentimes, we can't get a hold of the responsible, and that's the person who has the authority really to be able to kick everyone out, and we're able to utilize that person, to leverage that person, cite that person, talk to that person, have that person understand the consequences should this party continue. So I do agree with both Katie and Philip on this, and that is that it does give more teeth for us, the fact that the responsible has to be available within 60 minutes is huge, because again, the number one problem we have is we cannot get a hold of the responsible. The fact that it does define and talks about serious threats to public safety, I think that's an excellent phrase put in there so that we can leverage that. The property on Sunrise Drive, for example, I think, I think we could probably agree that that location there, at this point, does fall into that category. I mean, so I agree that the ordinance that's just being proposed does give us a lot more teeth to work with, yes.
So, so could you effectively, if we had an incident going on tonight, does our existing ordinance give you the authority to stop what's going on immediately?
We typically use the law, so I think one of the, one of the residents talked about, you know, having a lot of minors in a property drinking alcohol. Well, you know, minors shouldn't be drinking alcohol, period. So we start enforcing the law, and that's how we're able to get people out of the house, contacting the parents, doing that kind of work. So right now, that's the approach we use, and then we work with our code enforcement partners, let them know what's going on so that they can work on their side, the city side, to see what we can do together to be able to address the issue. So, so far, that's worked. We haven't had major issues. It's not often that we go to a call more than once a night. Again, like I said earlier, the number one reason is these big parties. And so moving forward, should this be adopted, I think it would certainly give us more leverage.
So do you have, do you need probable cause that a crime or something illegal is going on in order to do an inspection today? This is one of the things I saw in the proposal.
Correct. So we can't, we can't enter a home unless we're given consent, there's some kind of urgency for us to get in, we have a search warrant, or we're in the process of investigating something, we believe there's evidence in the house. So pretty limited in terms of when we can go inside.
Okay, I really appreciate the answer, and I have just one more question, if my council colleagues will indulge me. This goes to paying for the work that we need to regulate this activity and ensure that we're doing things consistent with public safety. So also the enforcement question. How much money are these, let me ask it this way, are we recovering enough money through TOT fees or otherwise today to let us do a reasonable job of regulating and enforcing the code that we have?
So I don't know, I think Eric might be pulling up our slide that shows the enforcement costs at the various enforcement levels, depending on what council chooses. To give you an estimate of TOT revenue, we get about, pre-COVID, we get about $400,000 just in TOT from STRs annually. Again, that was about $30,000 to $40,000 a month prior to COVID. However, during COVID, it's dropped to $5,000 a month. And so we're really unsure of what that is going to look like once COVID stabilizes and when people are allowed to resume travel.
Okay, but assuming we get back to a new normal that looks a little bit like the old normal, it looks like we would have sufficient revenue even to go the proactive level, is that correct?
And this is, TOT is not including a registration fee, which we would be proposing at a future date if council wished to pursue that, to recover costs.
Okay, okay. Do we believe that if we somehow, as the Expedia letter claims, we are putting requirements on these platforms and not working with us, that we would be liable for needing, soliciting voter approval under Prop 218?
We don't, but I'll let Sarah Clark, our Deputy City Attorney, address that more formally.
Thanks, Katie. So we've reviewed carefully the Expedia Group letter. This is not a new issue, they brought this to our attention last summer. Frankly, the Expedia Group letter has been relatively cursory. You see, it's a short paragraph that sort of makes broad allegations that Prop 218 requirements, voter approval requirements apply here. We've researched this issue and don't believe they have a very strong argument. Prop 218 requires voter approval when you are imposing new tax obligations on entities, and that's not what this ordinance does. Instead, it creates pass-through obligations for hosting platforms, much like, for instance, a grocery store has an obligation to collect tax from its customers when you buy groceries, or, you know, a car dealership similarly. That doesn't mean that the hosting platform is being taxed, that just means that they have administrative and regulatory requirements that they're obligated to comply with. That said, it's a, it's a issue that has not been litigated, and so of course, there's some uncertainty, but we believe we have a strong argument to impose this sort of obligation. And noticeably, a number of other jurisdictions have done, have crafted similar ordinances. Cupertino is not going out on a limb with this type of proposal.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Were they to come after us? I'm assuming that we could go to the League of California Cities and find lots of other cities in the state even, that would consider joining us in defending against legal action or take our own action to block any lawsuit that they would impose.
I believe that to be true. I'd also note that in conversations with the Expedia Group folks over the course of last fall, they had a relatively small number of units in the, in Cupertino, and many of them were cross-listed on other platforms. And at that time, they informed the city that they may, you know, if this regulation were to pass, they may in fact just pull out of the city. I don't think they were threatening litigation at that point.
I see. That concludes my questions, and I look forward to commenting once we've heard from the public. Thank you.
Okay, Leon Chow, welcome. Unmute yourself, okay.
Hi, so I see that this was last on the Planning Commission agenda on January 14th. So what's the, I understand that the reason you are not recommending adopting the ordinance today is because we are not sure of how many STR are operating right now. So on January 14th, did the Planning Commission make any recommendation on which model of the enforcement, or did the staff provide them any cost estimate at that time?
Maybe I can take a stab at that, and Eric can take it. For the Planning Commission, I do believe there were some estimates provided with regard to the amount of costs that might be associated with each type of enforcement, whether it was reactive, semi-active or active. And Eric, if you can go through that possibly with Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, so we looked at the different enforcement options based off, fees based off the different levels of enforcement. So at that time, we had roughly 400-ish STRs. So just with the enforcement options that were listed in that table, you're looking at for proactive approach, which is, you know, cool third-party monitoring and additional contract staffing, at about $1,000, semi-proactive, about 709, and reactive, about 398. And that's just for the enforcement. We probably added an hour or so of staff time to process the applications for that. Now, though, with the reduction of STRs, that fee would change significantly. Essentially, one of the things we're looking for is whether or not this needs to be a cost recovery permit. Do we want the TOT to offset the cost of the short-term rentals, or do we want to pass that cost onto the short-term rentals? So with...
The cost that you've mentioned is per year, per unit?
Per year, per unit, based off that estimate.
For the fee, yeah.
Yeah, at that time.
And that using, proactive will be using external companies?
Correct. We've received quotes from a third-party code enforcement company that would help with that.
Reactive would be internal, just maybe hiring another health of enforcement officer?
Another like part-time, but one of the things that we do highly recommend is the third-party monitoring, because they provide a lot of analytical data for all these STRs, and they help us identify where they are, and so that we know how to enforce. We know there's an actor there, and we can look at the data when that thing was being listed and go back and do the proper enforcement.
So the reason that we, you are not sure of the cost now, now that the number is reduced from 400 units to 240 units, is you, the cost will be mostly the same for contracting out? And now with 240 units, the cost will become higher because it will be spread with fewer units, is that a concern?
Exactly. It's more of the cost we were analyzing or estimating was based off the number of short-term rentals that we were, we were kind of seeing a standard 400-ish for several months. So we were confident with that numbers, and so with the, with the solution in place, that number decreased significantly, especially that month right afterwards. Now it's ticking back up, but we don't know what it's going to be like in a month, or three months, or six months. So we find in some time to analyze.
The program that you are proposing is an annual license update, so ideally, we will be reassessed the cost annually, based on how it works, right? So likely, we could start with a reactive program, now that the activity is low, likely the complaint will be low, and then we can get started for this first year. And then as the number comes back up, I think even after FIP is over, the number is not going to jump back up. It will take time. After an year, maybe it's back to 400, maybe not even that, then we'll reassess, right? So that's something we can consider.
That's definitely something we can consider. We can, one of the ideas is bringing back the fee at a later date, so that we can kind of get a better understanding of it, of the short-term rental operators, and we can bring a different fee for that. I think at minimum, we would want that third-party monitoring to occur. Like I said, I think it's one of the very useful tools that we have at our disposal, as well as a fee that would cover some of staff's time to process those applications and to verify the different requirements that we need for the STR operator.
I also wanted to add, Councilmember Chow, that there are some, there is a lead time to having the programming set up so that we can accept the applications online, once we hire the third-party monitoring, and then also some lead time to actually hiring and contracting with the part-time code enforcement officers as well. So there is some lead time to having all of that put into place. There's also a lead time to adopting a change to our fee schedule, which cannot go into effect for about 60 days after council adoption. So there are, any, any ordinance that would go into effect would take at least, at a minimum 90 days to, for us to be set up to implement everything.
Okay, yeah, but I'm looking at the Orinda ordinance, they adopted an urgency ordinance for short-term rental, I guess for, to address some situation over there. Yeah, I think we'll talk about that later. Right now, it's just clarifying.
Okay, Darcy, do you have clarifying questions?
I do, and they have to do with the redlining of the ordinance. The first one is on page seven of the document. So you're coming up with a licensing scheme, and there is a mechanism for revocation, which in my mind is a good thing, because of course, that's the stick you hold, right? So revoking 5.08, .050, at the bottom of page seven, states, A, revocation of registration, a short-term rental registration may be revoked for the following reasons. One is basically about lying, the second one is violation of local or state law, the third one is that there have been two willful violations of the municipal code that have occurred within the preceding six months. How are you determining what is willful? Well, you know, that's the state of mind of the... Or, you know, that's the state of mind of the, how is that going to be ascertained?
I can attempt to answer that. I think generally, this is Philip Wilk, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. Generally, the, I guess, idea there was after notice is provided, and there's an opportunity to voluntarily stop doing whatever that is, if that continues more than two times, that's where we'd consider that willful.
So what, okay, so you thought that through, so is the idea that if we're invoking this, that you or a code enforcement officer other than yourself or a sheriff's deputy would provide some kind of attestation that you provided notice, and then the violation continued, and that's why you're deeming it willful? Is that the idea here?
Generally, in concept, but typically, an attestation is not necessary. We would just have to show, of course, that we sent the notice, and generally, not for all notices, but for some notices, we can file an affidavit to that effect. So if that is necessary, yes, we can do that.
But you are intending on having some kind of evidentiary documentation that notice was provided, and therefore, based upon that, you believe that it's a willful violation because they had some kind of advance notice?
Right.
We have an idea of how we're going to be establishing this from the outset, correct?
Yes. Yes, you're correct. So with that notice, also with an opportunity to voluntarily stop. That is, I guess, the theory there, yeah.
Okay, great. You know, I think this is perfectly legitimate to ask as well, and to preface it this way. When we had the earlier public comments during oral communications, I did, I looked up the municipal code, I noticed that Title IX was Health and Sanitation, Title X is Public Peace, Safety and Morals, and it occurred to me that perhaps we did have something already with regard to those two titles that could help us in this situation. Chapter 9.22 is property maintenance. Unfortunately, I didn't really see anything that directly spoke to this particular situation, so I think I understand what you're going through with trying to identify particular parts of the code. I will note, however, that Section 1.12.030 does have a public nuisance abatement provision. However, I think that would require council action, essentially directing the city attorney to try to abate a public nuisance. In any event, this goes to the question with regard to subsection four, which is at the top of the next page, and it's the same general section having to do with the revocation of registration, and this is that, quote, "The short-term rental activity has caused or is causing a serious threat to human health or public safety," end quote. So, you know, with that long preface, you know, and the reason I provide it is that, you know, as I'm looking through Title IX and Title X, I think I'm seeing your difficulty with identifying particular provisions of our health and our safety codes. How are we defining a serious threat to human health or public safety for the purposes of revocation of a license to operate an STR? Because I feel that if we don't have a specific definition similar to what you were saying is going to be our idea of trying to establish willfulness. We don't have something specific like that from the outset, we may run into that same kind of problem, the, you know, idea that, is there something that we're pointing out in the municipal code under public safety or health that they're doing incorrectly? And if you could just answer that question first, I might have a follow-up. So what does constitute, quote, "A serious threat to human health or public safety," end quote, that we can tangibly identify?
I'm going to defer to our deputy city attorney, Sarah Clark, on that one.
Sure. So I think you've identified the difficulty in drafting appropriate language here, but I will note that "serious threat to human health or public safety" is a term of art that is regularly used in municipal codes, and there's a good body of law on when that might apply. It comes up in the public nuisance categories as well as other types of regulations. I think that Captain, Captain referred to some of the instances where we might see something that's a serious threat to human health and public safety, where you have ongoing criminal activity, is one example, but there may be others where a common occurrence is where you have something that, the condition of a building may cause a fire or other sort of sewage backup, other imminent threats to the well-being of the surrounding neighbors. But this is an area where it's, it would be difficult to code with specificity every single instance, that you would see a specific threat to public health and, public, human health and public safety, because you don't want this to be so narrowly drafted that you've sort of penned yourself in. And it may be something that, so we have the opportunity here to look at issuing administrative guidelines to define further procedures in this area. If that becomes necessary, that's something that the city council could look at, or, sorry, that the city could look at.
Right. I appreciate the idea that you want to be able to have more flexibility. I mean, pushing back against that is the idea that people want to have, you know, appropriate notice, which is reasonable. But I mean, in this instance, it seems like we could identify, you know, violation of safety-oriented requirements, you know, our municipal code or the sheriff's office has county and state regulations. If they're being, if tenants are being cited for, you know, safety-related or public health, or, I think morals is in there too. Title X is public safety, public peace, safety and morals. I mean, you know, is there something that we can tie that to, similar to the willful violations of municipal code? And I note that you have five sub-points here, I mean, you could add a sixth that specifically says that if you are in violation of these types of, you know, public safety, health or moral regulations, you know, that would, you know. I just, you know, I want to make sure that we're not invoking something that is vague enough to get us into trouble with regard to someone pushing back at us.
Sure. I very much appreciate that. I think that the way that I would look at this when you're approaching a potential situation, and I'll speak in generalities, is that we most likely would first fall under item two, which is that the rental activity is being conducted in violation of local or state law, so that, those are the instances that you just brought up. If we can point to a very specific regulation that they're violating, it's far easier to prove that, and that's what we would operate under. Similarly, if we have a situation where they're violating to the terms of their permit, and we're able to give that advance notice, and then they continue doing the activity, then we get to go under item three, those willful violations of the municipal code. And four is really a catch-all. It's there as a backstop for when those first two items haven't worked for us, and we still want to be able to say, actually, our laws didn't anticipate this emerging threat to human health and public safety, and we want to be able to still move forward with an enforcement action. So I think of this more as a backstop, as opposed to the primary mechanism by which we would move forward with an enforcement action.
Okay. Good answer. Thank you very much.
Okay. And before we go to John Darcy, you pointed out some things that I would not be comfortable in delaying the implementation of the ordinance. The fees are one thing, but, you know, if this ordinance gives us more leverage to solve situations like the one that was mentioned earlier, I don't think we can wait six months.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't point that out, actually, but I did want to comment on that, so thanks for reminding me. Yeah, I mean, I didn't see in the staff recommendation where it was to say a delay. At least that's not in the materials. Yeah, I would actually tend to, and this is not a question, but I would tend to support it, you know.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. Maybe it's only the fees that are being delayed. Is that true?
No, that's not my understanding. I think the staff's recommendation is to delay, it's probably because of the fees. So what council could decide is whatever fees are not recovered, that comes out of the general fund. You could just establish the budget until the STR will back up to a certain level. The whole, for the fees and everything is cost recovery, right? So that it's budget neutral.
Okay. Okay, before we go to the public, John, did you have any clarifying questions before we take it to the public? Okay.
John, I think you're muted still.
Yeah, I can't unmute him. I tried. Okay.
Okay.
Go.
So I think I'd like to start with that, I feel that, you know, Captain Urina has a challenge in the sense that we read about, and we see on the news where there's some type of disturbance, the police show up, he indicates that he has to have sufficient cause to even go in, and they can't stand there all night long, ensuring that the person is not going to turn up, the music not going to be outside creating disturbances, but he can't go in and do anything. He can check for their license, perhaps, things like that, but I think we have, I think we have the ability to make that a whole lot easier for him. The registration information, if the rules say that they're allowed to have one or two guests per night, and I'm asking this, you know, clarify wherever I'm incorrect, Katie, they're allowed to have one or two guests per night? Katie?
The number of guests is based off the number of bedrooms in a...
Are you talking about current regulations, or are you...
Yes. Well, yeah.
Currently, no more than two, yes.
No more than two. Okay. So the sheriff shows up, let's say there's four people there, how does he discern which are the two that are registered versus the ones that are not registered? And this is where I'm thinking, we can make his job a lot easier for him. So how does the current registration work? So there's a STR, you know, a client, a customer has filled out, has pulled into the driveway, and he goes in. How does that information get stored? Do we have it real time? Does the sheriff have it real time? I mean, can you help, help me to understand how that's taken care of? I'm kind of asking, how do we currently do it for Sunrise Drive? Okay, so...
I'm gonna let you, because he was prepared to answer.
I'm actually asking clarifying questions, so I can attempt to answer. Councilmember Willie, are you asking about how the sheriff verifies how many people are allowed in the property currently under our...
Well, I'm focused, you're really light, your voice went very low, but I understand what you're saying. No, I'm interested in the registration information today. A client for Sunrise registers and, on a Friday, and 5:00, he shows up in the driveway and proceeds to walk in and stay there. Do, you know, he registered on Friday, let's say, at noon time. Is that information available to us real time?
So the registration, all the city gets is information about the applicant registering, the property owner registering their STR. Once they go ahead and they actually put a listing up on the website, and they actually lease, rent out the STR to somebody, we know every time they lease or rent out that STR to someone. The city does not get informed each, for every agreement that they enter into.
So now, can we request that? I mean, can we have a online form that the person has filled out along with the STR owner? So the STR owner has that form, the client filled it out and said, Jack Snow and his wife are going to be there starting at 5:00, and that we can then, just like the police have their monitors in their car, they're following a car on the road, they plug in the license number, bingo, they've got what they need. Can we institute that in our STR plan, this real-time access to the guests at it? I'm thinking that's going to make Captain Urina's job a whole lot easier. When he shows up, either the people are or are not registered guests, and if it's allowed to have two registered guests, and there are 10 people, how does he tell people, unfortunately, you cannot congregate here and you have to leave, when he doesn't know who is registered and who's not? I'm not sure who to ask this of, maybe it's a city attorney question that needs to go off, but I'm definitely, you know, what we have heard about the Sunrise definitely causes me to really want to focus on protecting our community from those that are...
Can I attempt to answer part of your question?
Sure.
So I can't answer the question about what the actual monitoring system will do, but what I can say is what I think what you're doing is asking us to manage the program, and that's going to take, if council's okay with us asking for more people, that's what it will take, for us to monitor. So you're asking us for, instead of the landlord monitoring who is, or the property owner monitoring who is their tenants, you're asking us to also monitor the tenants.
Well, I'm asking that we have access to that real-time data. That data has to exist.
It has to, right.
Yes. So having access to that data, I can't, I think we can't expect Urina to be the one out there looking up, trying to find who's the registered, but if we have our STR spreadsheet, for lack of a better word, and it shows, you know, by day and by address and who's there, and then if there, or when there is a call, he goes out and he finds eight people standing on the porch, he can immediately, I think, ask, "I want to see all your IDs, you're registered, you're not, you're registered, you're not, it's now in quiet time, you guys have to leave," and these two go inside.
So I think, I think that the carriers, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, the carriers have the information as to who registers to stay at somebody's, let's say there's two people you were talking about staying at an STR. So then the question would be, I wonder if we can require the carrier to provide the city with that information.
So that's where I'm heading, is I want to make sure that we do what we can to, okay.
Sure. Can I? Go ahead, Sarah. Thank you. So on the question of whether the city can require hosting platforms to provide real-time data of all their rental transactions, the answer is unfortunately, no. There's been a raft of litigation on this topic in federal courts across the country, where cities have largely lost on First Amendment privacy concerns, where hosting platforms are not required to turn over that sort of real-time information. The way around this is that we are requiring a local contact for every short-term rental, and the sheriff will have access to that information. And so, you know, they get the call, they show up at the house, they then have access to the person that has to be responsible within 60 minutes, and that person will have the access to the information about how many people are supposed to be on the property, who to contact, how to enforce properly in that instance. So that's sort of the workaround of this sort of real-time monitoring system.
That's good. That's good.
So I would hope that we're going to explore that more and make sure that we have put in, you know, every, everything that we can to make this, you know, helpful to Captain Urina and his crew, and not winding up with him showing up and then not being able to enter, not being able to do much other than, the noise went down when he was there, and then he left, and the situation was right back again. So, okay, I'll go ahead and move on. So it said that non-owner stays could be 60 a year?
60 days a year.
And can we reduce that? I mean, when you're talking 60 days a year, essentially, the owner... I mean, when you're talking 60 days a year, essentially, the owner can say, hey, I'm leaving every weekend, there's 52 weeks in a year, I, I'm gonna be gone every weekend, and the poor neighbors get, you know, um, you know, every weekend, this type of activity. Can we reduce that to, make it something mandatory? The owner has a life too, and, uh, over the course of 52 weeks, he wants to go away maybe 10, 10 weekends a year, so maybe bring that 60 down to 10. We can always increase it, if, if everything's running smooth and we don't have issues and things like that, okay, maybe, uh, we would increase it 15, 20, 25, but 60 to me, when we have 52 weeks in a year, seems excessive, it, it's almo- I feel we are almost, uh, promoting that, uh, there's gonna be, uh, non-owner, uh, a significant number of non-owner, uh, uh, stays going on.
I think there was a, a thought process, why, why 60 days, so why don't we, I think maybe, can we address that?
And so, we had talked about this actually at the study session, um, and this was one of our questions in our community survey, 60 days kinda came in as the sweet spot for people, that's actually on the lower end, when we compare to other cities, that, uh, 180 days, 90 days, 90 days seem to be the most common, um, but due to our residents and their responses, we recommended the 60 days. And then, this was also discussed at the study session by council, I think you guys had this similar discussion of, should we lower it, um, which council can do if that is consensus of council, um, and, uh, but at that time, I think the, the thought was, if somebody goes on vacation for the summertime, can they, can they use their Airbnb at the time when it's not hosted? Um, so that, those were the thoughts, but, but council can choose to reduce that number if they wish.
Well, good, I mean, that's good input, so then I would kinda say, the number of violations would be tied to the number of days that they could have non-hosted, um, stays. So, you take this, uh, Sunrise Drive where it's been a slew of, of violations, there, conceivably, they should be down at zero stays that are non-hosted. I mean, if, 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 if we have this significant number of events happening, and the odds of Captain Urina showing up, and there's no host there, and he has to wait an hour to find a local contact, I mean, once, twice, but I mean, by the time you get to three, three of these events, at that point, I would think that they should be down to zero, uh, non-host stays.
So that, that, rather than kind of creating this kind of, uh, sliding scale, um-
Yep.
Your revocation would come in. After two violations, uh, their permit would be revoked and they would no longer be allowed to operate.
Okay, good. Sheriff versus code enforcement. So, uh, Philip, I'm thinking, is eight to five, is he the first line of defense? Um, okay, you've got the neighbor, and if it's a, um, non-experienced neighbor, and something's going on next door, uh, he's in Cupertino, he, it's, it's not life-threatening, it's not, you know, some type of, uh, burglary or something, so, he calls 311, is Philip gonna be the one that's gonna show up and do the survey? And then, call Captain Urina? If it's after five o'clock, Philip's gone home, the 311 gets diverted directly to Captain Urina, how does that work?
So I can, I can start with that. Um, so, yes, typically, I am a business hours, um, person, um, doing these sort of, uh, enforcement and investigations, um, during the day. Um, so, I guess the theory with our setup is, um, the sheriff's office is fully authorized to enforce, uh, the municipal code. Um, after hours, the, the theory is that, you know, they can respond, uh, immediately, and I would probably guess, or suggest, that 311 not be used in this case, that they should be contacting the sheriff's office directly, uh, for an immediate response. Um, and so at that point, um, the sheriff's office can, can respond and, um, figure out what's going on and address the matter appropriately, from that point on. Now, from my end of things, um, after, um, uh, these things get reported to me the following day, that's when I will take it a step further, uh, and be, uh, going to the property, the registered, um, licensee, and, um, asking them to be accountable for what has happened the, the previous day, or previous night.
So on the case like, uh, Sunrise Drive, you've actually then gone out and talked to the owner, has she been available? Has she been willing to talk to you? Has she given you the details that you wanted? I mean, um, something happened, the neighbors complained, um, you want evidence of who those people were that stayed at the house, you want, you know, that they weren't underage kids, there were no drugs involved, and whatever it is that, you know, you would normally do. Is that how it works? Did you get what you needed, um, at that address?
So, uh, of course, I can't answer, I've been advised under counsel to not answer specifically about any specific properties or, or specific cases. But do you have a general question? I didn't catch your general question there.
So, you find out the next day that something has happened, the sheriff had to go out, the sheriff then automatically, uh, sends a report to you? I'm trying to understand how this works. How can we help the residents if we don't really know how the process worked? So, uh, he had his, his deputies go out there, they wrote up a report, they may or may not have been able to do what they wanted to do, they couldn't get access or anything, but then, does he automatically electronically transmit the report to you, and do you have it on your desk the next morning?
Uh, that would be great, if that, that can actually happen, um, but, uh, in most cases, just an email would be fine. Uh, whoever, whatever deputy responded, um, they can certainly communicate with me, um, anytime they wish, and I will pick it up.
Is that how it happens now, though? I mean, are, are you getting 100% of the reports? Uh, is it haphazard? Is it occasional? I mean, again, I wanna make sure we're, we're putting in place, you know, a solid situation for the community, when we're talking 400, that could grow to 800.
Absolutely. Uh, so typically, uh, well, first of all, uh, in general, we don't have the degree of violation that we've witnessed recently, uh, with regard to STRs, uh, that is a rare occurrence, uh, in general. Um, so, uh, that's not, this is not a, an example or model for typical, um, I guess, procedure here. But, um, if, if further examples of this kind of, uh, activity does occur, um, we can establish, and I can, of course, uh, with the captain, um, a protocol or procedure, um, where he can advise any of his deputies who respond to, uh, similar events, uh, to contact me directly, in any manner that they, they see fit.
Yeah, I thi- I think we wanna ma- at least I would, you know, wanna make sure that this process is clearly understood, so that we're not finding out days, weeks, months later, what's been going on, and, and while there were, uh, points in time that, uh, things got quelled for a little while, and then they, uh, arose again, so I'd like to make sure that we've done that, and I'll be looking to Captain Urina to tell us if he feels that we've done enough to help him and put in place. So, I agree, this is probably, uh, a unique case that we come across, but I think we definitely need to learn from it, um.
Councilmember Willie, if I, if I can, uh, add to that?
Sure.
So, typically what happens is, unfortunately, there is a gap there that you just pointed out, and that is that when we do respond to some of these homes, you know, there's 40, 50 people, clearly a violation, um, there is a gap, because oftentimes, we don't, uh, let our code enforcement partners know. And the reason is because, uh, oftentimes, it's just that one time. And so, uh, one way we can get around that is to create, uh, like a triplicate type, three-by-five card, something like that, where we can fill out that document on scene, give the responsible a copy, and then give our code enforcement partners the other copies, so that they can get them every single time that we go out to-
Yes, absolutely. I mean, if, if, if it was your neighbor's house, that was the, uh, short-term rental and this was going on, y- you would not be happy to, uh, not have any action for two or three of these events, I mean, the first time it happens.
Can you finish up so we can get to the public comment? These are only clarifying questions now, and we'll come back to council after we hear the public comment.
Yeah, and these are the clarifying questions, but I am finished.
Wonderful. Okay, um, let's, I have three people that wish to comment in public, uh, there goes four. Uh, Larry, um, you, you can go first.
Welcome. Hi again, this is Larry, can you hear me? Yep. Okay, well, thanks again, um, I think this is all really good, um, discussion. Unfortunately, it's gonna take time to implement all this, Sunrise doesn't have that kind of time, so, we're hoping that our discussions with the city manager will lead to a good resolution, and, and, uh, we will continue working with the city in making our recommendations on the new ordinance, but for the current situation we're facing, we've gotta take care of it now. So, but I do have comments on the proposed ordinance. The first comment is the definition of host, and I'll give you an example, um, the, the property on Sunrise Drive, the owner never lived there, so the owner did designate a host, the host was a, a long-term subletter, okay? And so, when I read the proposed ordinance, the proposed ordinance says the host is occupying the residence, I would change that to be the host is the owner. Make the owner live and, and be the, the, the onsite person who is supervising the short-term rental, not some designated subletter, so that's point number one. Point number two is, I agree with Councilman Wiley, if there is, if they do not respond within 60 minutes to a phone call, that's a violation, and if that happens twice, they, the, the, the license is revoked, because what happened again on Sunrise Drive, she, we did finally get, the, the police came out, we did finally get ahold of her, but she said her phone had been turned off. Now, uh, you know, whether her phone was really turned off, or she didn't wanna bother, you know, dealing with the situation, who knows? But, make that 60-minute timeframe a violation, and two strikes, you're out. My second comment, third comment is, there's a proliferation now of these STR platforms, this creates complexity in how you regulate and how you enforce this. You know, at one time, we were relying on the background checks of Airbnb, but what happens if these other STR platforms come on, that, that, that are, are used by other people that don't have, don't require background checks? How are we going to deal with that? So that's where enforcement comes in, because if, if the city's gonna take the risk to allow, uh, platforms to be used for short-term rentals, you have to be, you have to acknowledge the fact that it's unregulated, you don't know, you don't have these background checks, so that, I think, has to be implemented. My next comment is, what about fines? I didn't see anything in the red line document about fines. Fines can be very effective if people are doing short-term rentals for the purpose of making lots and lots of money, and the only way you can maybe be, change their behavior is not revoke their registration, but revoke their registration and make them pay a fine. The combination of both will make them comply with the ordinance. And then finally, this whole thing about, um, uh, enforcement with reactive, semi-proactive, proactive, I think we all agree, reactive is not gonna work. But the city's gonna have to figure out how to gonna, how they're gonna pay for this, because the only way that this is going to work is you've got to be proactive, you've got to have, um, I don't know what these, um, third parties, somebody said the third party look at data, that's not what we need, we don't want somebody looking at data, we want somebody like Philip going to the site, making, talking to the own, to the owner, enforcing the ordinance, third-party data analysis people don't seem to fit the bill. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is, um, Jennifer, welcome. Jennifer?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, you're no longer fired, welcome.
Oh, well, I try. Uh, anyway, uh, thank you all for having this discussion about the STRs. Um, this, I have attended all the meetings on this, my mother actually has one of these residences in her, uh, home in Aptos, and, um, it, it has been, and I, I, I completely, I, I, my sympathies go out to the people on Sunrise Avenue. When you have something like this happening, it is just, it brings the community together, but it just is so disruptive for everyone. Um, I'm just gonna mention that, have you all thought about having each STR put up perhaps a thousand-dollar bond that the city keeps? And then, that will pay for, like, if, um, if the, uh, law enforcement has to go out repeatedly, um, and if you lose your, if you lose your STR license, you, the city keeps the thousand-dollar bond, it works for trees, it works for other issues in real estate, but you might do something like that, it gives you more of a bite. The other issue I was going to say is, um, in terms of the loud parties, that the one unit that's on my mother's street, they had an incident where there were, uh, teens running all over the road, there had been too many in the house, uh, police had to come out, they also had about two months ago, someone around the corner that was not using STR license, but he had three illegal rentals and had built an illegal rental unit in his, down the back of the property, and the, the code enforcement had to come out and stop that. So, I can understand that this be, this is an issue that the city is going to wind up having to do and more and more control over, and when you said there might be 800 of these, I think John said that, we're just getting to the point where we need to have responsible oversight on this, because it is potential. I was horrified with what the neighbors described with Sunrise, I mean, that is just awful, you would not wish that on anyone, and we need to make sure that the neighbors are not subjected to this, and I, there may need to be more bite in the, uh, code. Uh, but yeah, I'm worried about traffic, I mean, parking, making sure people aren't parking all over the roads, and that, um, but yeah, think about the bond issue that, and, believe me, that Sunrise sounded like an arruda about ready to happen, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer, next we have Alice, welcome, Alice.
Hello?
Yep, we hear you, yes.
Okay, great, yeah, uh, thanks for having me back. So, uh, I was looking at the proposal, and one thing that struck me is the cost seems to be of, of what we're evaluating with enforcement options, proactive, semi-proactive, or reactive, um, and I would like to, uh, see if we can put the cost on the STR owners who are breaking the rule, and here's an example of what's already happening with a, a, a relationship with the sheriff's office, I have security alarm at home, first violation, there's a courtesy, second one, I think I get charged $125, I get a letter in the mail, every single one af- violations, they're gonna have to pay for the sheriff's visit, and, uh, whatever costs that city incurs, and I think that would be a deterrent for, uh, owners to misbehave, and that also would generate revenue for our city to, in order to enforce, um, uh, the STRs that's in place. Um, so I would like to see the city passing the cost of enforcement back to those bad owners who are taking advantage of what we, the nicety that we have right now. Um, yeah, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Warren, welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, is it working this time?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, so, I first want to thank all the residents on Sunrise Drive for sharing their story, because it, it, I'm appalled that they're saying this has been going on for years, and it's, it's, it's awful. So, thank you for sharing, I'm glad I was in this meeting to hear that, and, and glad I could stay to hear this. My, so, in the meantime, after them sharing stories, I was doing a little research, and I, I, I was trying to imagine how an actual owner of a property would be, you know, who this Cindy person was, um, and whether she was an actual owner. But now, when Larry spoke again, it sounds like, no, she's not. So, why is this conversation happening with her? She's a sub, she's a subleasing to people, but the owner of this property needs to take care of this problem. Her, there, I don't know if it's legal to get a copy of the lease that he has with her, if, if I'm getting this story right, and say, hey, what's in your lease? Is she allowed to do this? Are you responsible? You know, what's going on? I just, this is similar thing that happened.
Cindy is the owner, but she says there is another tenant that's the host.
Okay, okay, well then, thank you for clarifying. So, Cindy is the person they've been talking to, she's not, God, this is such a disaster. Um, yeah, anything and everything that could be do, done to help them currently, and anything and everything that can be done in this ordinance to make this impossible, has to be done. I mean, I had a similar, thankfully, nothing came of it, but that a neighbor of ours was subleasing to someone who knew they were gonna sublease as a hacker house. It never really took off, so we didn't have the issues, um, but we certainly could've, and, you know, I, I know other stories from real estate friends that, yeah, anyway, it's ugly. You guys gotta do everything you can. I feel super bad for Sunrise.
For this property, Cindy is the owner, she doesn't live there, so she's not bothered by everything that's happening, and the, I think our ordinance deal says host, but host doesn't have to be the property owner, that's something I'll ask later.
Okay.
And that's the problem.
All right, next is Cupertino resident, welcome.
Uh, you unmuted me? This is Peggy Griffin?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to unmute. I'll get back to you, Peggy. Cupertino resident, you're unmuted, go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Yeah, this is Bobby Trong, I've spoken at, uh, several of these, uh, prior meetings before, and one of the things that I was, uh, advocating for was an owner occupied requirement, and I think that's one of the issues that's happening on Sunrise. Uh, so that's my first comment. The, uh, the next thing is actually much easier. I noticed in the, uh, proposed regulations, there is a requirement to, um, uh, have a, a guest handbook that has all of the necessary information in it, and I would greatly appreciate it if the city would provide some sort of like a template that we could use that covers all the necessary points, because if I were to do it myself, I would be afraid that maybe I missed something, and lo and behold, that's already my first violation, and I, I don't want that. Uh, a template would be greatly useful there. And, um, the first point, and the third point is, I know we've been talking a lot about, uh, Sunrise, um, and a lot of attention has been paid to that because of the egregious circumstances there. Um, but I don't think that's necessarily something that's, uh, you know, germane to the short-term rental, because you could have that situation, that same situation with a long-term rental, or just a, a neighbor that's just a horrible neighbor who, who constantly violates, uh, the rules, and it bothers the rest of the neighborhood. So, maybe, uh, you know, something we can, we should consider is, uh, you know, strengthening some other municipal codes, um, that would allow, uh, you know, people like that to be dealt with, uh, wholly and apart from just, uh, an STR, because it doesn't necessarily have to be an STR. I've had plenty of neighbors who, who, uh, have loud music and wild parties late to the night, and, and they're not short-term rentals. So, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Bobby. And next, okay, now Peggy, it's your turn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor Scharf, councilmember, staff, um, like everyone else, I'm appalled at the stories that, uh, have been, uh, told to us tonight. I agree with what Larry and Alice and Councilmember Willie suggested, the triplicate would be great. I, I like the idea of the, the one warning, and then from then on, it's a violation. Because until somebody suggested that, it feels wishy-washy. Give them a warning, and then maybe you give them a violation, I, it just didn't seem strong. And change host to be owner occupied, that would eliminate this third-party kind of stuff. And as far as, uh, also possibly limit the rentals to only approved platforms. So, like you say, Airbnb does a background check. Well, maybe another one also does a background check, so maybe you have some requirements that these platforms should have, and if they don't have them, then they can't rent through them. Anyway, um, and the number of days that the host, the owner, the host is gone, I don't know how you keep track of that, and how you prove it, that seems really not very objective, unless, and, and, and how you monitor that? Is that only, does it only come up when there's a problem? Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Peggy, yeah, I had written down some of these things that the residents had mentioned, and including, you know, is it legal for us to, you know, say, okay, only the, only these platforms, because they're the only ones that meet our standards in terms of background checks, et cetera? Um, is that something we're allowed to do, or, you know, is, is the, uh, owner required to use a platform at all? Can they go on Craigslist and, uh, do a short-term rental, you know, without Airbnb, or VRBO, or Expedia? Um, fines, um, I'm not sure what the fines are. Uh, I like the idea of a bond or a security deposit, if that's legal. Uh, and of course, yeah, the template for a guest handbook is a, a great idea. And I'm not sure about requiring the owner, requiring the host to be the owner, if that is something that we have to do. I mean, you know, the situation at Sunrise is horrible, but we can't really write this ordinance based just on one, um, you know, one terrible egregious, uh, incident. Uh, so, yeah, that's the discussion I have, uh, so let other people comment. Liang, you have, your hand raised, so go ahead.
Unmute.
You're unmuted.
So, should we then motion for this, um, ordinance first? I'm learning the new process. So, I'm motion to amend the municipal code by adding this chapter, uh, chapter five point oh eight, and amending chapter three point one two, and chapter nineteen point oh eight, and chapter nineteen point one two, and chapter nineteen point one two zero. Um, and then we can open for discussion, right? If there is a second, is that the process? And then we can add amendment as we, we are going.
Yeah, Madam City Attorney, since we're all kind of new at this, is this what we need to do for Rosenberg? Make the motion, and then, then make amendments?
Right.
Heather? Is Heather still here?
You're muted somehow, Heather.
Oh.
I apologize. Um, that is the, the formal process outlined in Rosenberg's. The city's practice has been to have a fair amount of discussion, and then make a motion with more details then, and given that the staff report already lays out a recommended action, I think the city's practice, um, is, is up to the chair's discretion to follow or not, but if the city would like to adhere more closely to the procedures.
Yeah, why don't we start?
And have a motion, then that can be the practice going forward, and the chairs.
Why don't we start adhering to it?
And enforcing to that.
Okay, so I.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Always start discussion. Okay, so, yeah, I think I had a question about the host also. It's true, we can really define our ordinance for one case. Um, so, so I'm not sure about that, but I like that, I think it's a good idea that we should have a guidebook, and I think we should require acknowledgement from the renters of, for the guidebook. So, do I need to list down the amendments that I hope to add to the ordinance? Because we, I think this one will require, we are adding a lot of things, right?
Right, well, we want to see if, what we want to add is actually.
Yeah.
Possible, I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Are there fines now for, for the violations, or you ju, do you just lose your license?
I can answer that.
Okay.
There currently are fines, and it's referred to in section five point oh eight point oh seven oh. Um, and it refers out to the standard fines found in title one of the city's administrative code. So, there's ones that ratchet up, one hundred, two hundred, five hundred dollars. Um, one thing to note is that there's currently a bill, um, that is going through the state legislature right now to allow fines, uh, to, it's called SB ten forty-nine, um, and it would allow fines for short-term rentals to go up to five thousand dollars. That's currently not permitted by state law, so this would be, um, something that, if passed, could give the city more leverage to, um, impose greater fines on short-term rentals.
Okay, and what about security deposits? Does anyone, I mean, is that?
That whole bond discussion, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, I haven't seen a city do that before, um, if that's something we would want to explore, unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you at, at this moment in time. If it's, if it's desired, we would have to go back and look at that more carefully.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, I don't know, if the, if we have those fines, I don't know if the secure, I mean, if they don't pay the fines.
Yeah, that's only if they don't pay, and then we have, so usually, it will just be there as security, right?
Right, but we take away their license if they don't pay the fines, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I see that that bill is, um, being, is Senator Glazer, so, I mean, I would, you know, he's very reasonable, hopefully this, uh, bill will go through. SB ten forty-nine.
So, then, in terms of who will be liable for the fines? Because right now, we have a question of the owner and the host are two different people.
Has to be owner.
And then the tenants are another party, there are three parties, plus the platform. Who would be liable for any of these code violation fines?
Well, at the end of the day, my understanding is the owner is responsible for, like, the enforcement of the rules on the property, whether they live there or not, so the fines should be to the owner.
Can we make the host also be liable, so that the host will be more careful?
If I may add.
Is that possible? Sorry, Glenn.
If I may add, Deb is correct, ultimately, the property owner, any property owner is ultimately responsible. However, the, the host, or the, the person who's actually directly con, conducting or allowing this activity is also equally responsible. Um, so, generally, the city can hold both persons responsible if they are different.
So, do you do two separate citations, or one citation that they are both liable to pay the fine?
It could be, uh, two separate citations, yes.
You can do separate citations?
Yes.
So, for example, they are only allowed two guests in a house, now they are having a big party of twenty people, maybe even staying overnight. Can you make, but you are not, usually not there, but can we do twenty citations for each of the guests?
Uh, in that case, if, if I can, uh, prove that there were that many people there, um, most likely, the sheriff's deputies, uh, who, if they respond, can help me with that. Uh, most likely, they'll have a, a record of identification that they've, um, looked at, and if I, if I do have that, it's not necessary to write twenty separate citations, um, I could write one citation, um, uh, times twenty, essentially.
Penalty violation.
Penalty, yeah.
Penalty, yeah. That would be great. So, if the sheriff can provide sufficient evidence to you, you can write the citation that make, I think if we times twenty for every person, that's probably going to be impactful, right?
Right, absolutely. Um, and, and the sheriff also can write an, immediately a citation if they wish, is fine, based on this ordinance.
Great. So, in terms of background checks, I, my understanding from the residents is that Airbnb does provide the option of, for the, whoever listing their property to, to screen tenants with background checks. But the, whoever listing the property needs to turn it on, but this, uh, particular property owner has been unwilling to turn on that feature. So, can the city require all them to use that feature if available on, on a platform?
I'm gonna defer to the city, Deputy City Attorney on that.
Thanks. Um, this is another area where I am not aware of any cities doing this. This feature on Airbnb is relatively new. I would note that many of the other platforms do not have this feature, um, and there are new platforms popping up every day. Um, I think it would be, my preliminary read is that it would be a long shot for this to be legal under federal law, but if it's strongly desired, we could, we could look in, into it.
Okay. Um, then, so I think there was talk of the local contact. Um, so, right now, in the current ordinance, uh, if they don't respond in sixty minutes, they, it's not a violation, right? We are just saying you need to respond, but it's not a violation if they don't respond within sixty minutes, so can we make that a violation?
Who's it answering?
Um, I'm actually processing the question in my head. I believe it would still be a violation. It would, it's a requirement for them to, to respond within sixty minutes, so any.
But they know it's a violation.
Yes, anything that they do not comply with would be a violation, and so would this.
Okay, good. And then can we require that, within sixty minutes, when they respond, they need to provide the names of the red, registered guests, their registered vehicles, um, their length of stay, and it's, whether, just, just all the rental information, so they, when they respond, they need to respond with that right away. In that way, sheriff or whoever there will have the information handy. And we require that, when they respond, they have, they provide all that information.
I would defer to Sarah on whether we can require that or not.
Yes, I think we can, um, require the local contact to have access to that information. I actually think this is something that is not necessarily to even put in the code, um, it could be in the, um, the materials that we developed and help with implementation. Uh, because otherwise, the local contact can't do their job if they don't have access to that information.
Um, but if they don't provide that information, that is, is an additional violation, right? That's a, that's a point.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the local contact can't respond properly to the complaint, that would be a violation.
That's why it needs to be in the code. That's why it needs to be in the code, so that if they they don't have the information ready, then it's a violation. If it's not in the code, then it's not a violation, right?
I think it would be, there's a potential to have that be a violation with it as drafted. There could be clarifying edits to make that specifically included, if desired.
Yeah, if we collect information, then, but the information cannot be made readily available, then what's the point of collecting it, right? Okay, so. Then another.
So I don't mean to cut everything, the discussion off or trying to amend, but you know, around 11 o'clock? And I'm just, right, how many more edits are we going to do? So we can, we have a hefty left set of things left.
So how many, how how are we verifying whether this is a primary residence of the host or not?
So in order to verify the primary residence, we look at different resources. So one would be a power report, property tax assessment, paycheck stuff, driver's license, registration, things like that. We have some discretion as to what documents we would require. We looked at how proof of residency is established to Cupertino Union School District and Fremont Union School District. That's kind of using that as a backdrop into verifying residency.
Well, if if there, they would only be able to claim their homeowner's exemption on their primary residence. Is that true?
I don't know.
That's right. People generally are allowed only one exemption on their property tax bill.
Okay.
But the host, the main property owner.
So I think Eric was giving a list, because typically, you offer here are a list of things you could use to satisfy this requirement in conjunction with certain other materials. So that's how the schools typically do it. They say you need to provide one thing from this list and one thing from this list. And that's how they verify your primary residence.
So we will be using similar standard as the school?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So I'm done.
Oh, great. Okay, does anyone else have anything?
Yes.
Go, Rod.
Thank you. You know, I suppose we could redesign this, get into every fine point and nuance of this. But I would beg that we let our city staff do that. I would beg that to you all, that we would be better off letting this ordinance go, getting this done if, as is, as the city. Because otherwise, we're going to be off on an exploratory goose chase here, and it's going to take a bunch of time. So my suggestion is, let's enact the items in the staff report that have been vetted and explored. Let's let our city manager go meet with the folks on Sunrise. If it turns out that she doesn't have the tools she needs to resolve the situation quickly, I would like to see this come back to the council as an emergency, something with an emergency ordinance that would give us tools we need to to resolve that situation for the benefit of those folks. Not in 60 days or 90 days, but immediately, okay? I think we clearly have plenty of evidence. And I guess just one other question I have before I finish. Do we, do we have the right to put a lien on somebody's property? If they, if our code enforcement folks rack up a bunch of fines and the owner just just refuses to take any action? Can we prevent them from selling without paying us?
We used to be able to, but state law prohibits us from doing that right now.
Is that because of the pandemic or generally?
I don't know. I didn't get your answer. I'm sorry, Rod. I know you asked that before. Sarah, can you, are you able to address that at all?
Unfortunately, I don't know if it's pandemic-related or otherwise. I did speak with Osa, who's been working on, Osa Wolf, in our office. And my understanding is that it, that is a change in state law, but I don't know its its source.
We need some, we need some means of collecting or recalcitrant. Yeah, so whatever that looks like. I mean, maybe that's the one thing that I would do differently. But, you know, if we sit here and try to redesign this on the fly, I I think we're just going to delay getting something important done here. So I would, I would hope that we could move ahead with the.
I agree with Rod. Let's just move it. I think a lot of what we said can be implemented by the staff as they see fit. And then, but then I do have a question about the cost. So if we are looking at a third-party person, company doing it with estimate of $1,000 per unit, and this 400 unit back in January, we are looking at $400,000 a year, right? Is that an estimated cost if we use a reactive model?
Proactive, that's the proactive.
A proactive, proactive model, yeah. So that would be, and if we use the reactive model, I see is 398 times 400, that's about $160,000 a year. So that's something we have to decide tonight. And I agree with Rod, if this is what we approve today is not sufficient, we can always do an urgency ordinance later. But we.
I'm happy with, I mean, to come back to what I'm trying to do. I'd be happy with us letting letting staff sort out what it thinks appropriate. I mean, if if we have really this one real problem, let's let's act with urgency to go resolve it. We don't want to design a program that is going to be very expensive if, you know, if it's not warranted. So I'd be happy to have the staff use their discretion to see, okay, if this is a growing problem and we really see an upswell in complaints, then maybe we go all the way to the proactive model. But otherwise, right, that money could be used for all the other sorts of things that we'd like to do. What's reassuring to me and what the staff represented is this the system will give us in any one of these scenarios, full cost recovery, and I think that's great.
Yeah, so it sounds like we are probably doing a reactive model first.
Fine, that's.
Right?
No.
So that it's.
If that's what Deb thinks is right.
Yeah.
Right.
So if I could just speak to this part of it, the enforcement cost piece, that is a piece that we plan to bring back to council so we can have a more thorough discussion on enforcement cost recovery, what the fee would be. Because we would still need to adopt a fee resolution amendment. And then we would also need to have a motion for the appropriation of whichever level was chosen. So that would be a future council item. Now the question becomes, the way the ordinance is written currently, we would be bringing it to you after normal travel is allowed to resume from the COVID pandemic. However, if you want this to be operative sooner or at a date certain, we would need that direction today.
I'd be happy to have it be be sooner. I mean, you know, we know we have a problem. We might as well, and it takes time to resolve, so let's put something in place and and then give some staff some discretion about how much money we put into enforcement. That'd be my suggestion. If you want a motion, I'll bring a motion.
So can we say that we want to activate the content of the ordinance so that everyone, so all the current owners should come, submit an application or permit application in three months? But any owner that has existing prior violations, they should submit an application in one month. Can we do that?
So we do need some lead time in order to set everything up, in order to get registration set up, to get the contracting underway, to get Airbnb and other platforms an opportunity to set up their systems, to be able to remove listings when we notify them that they are, they do not have an active permit. So we would recommend that if you would like a date certain to, I believe it was January 1st, 2021. And that would give them a grace period. We would have registration set up prior to that, so they can register ahead of time. And then we would begin, it would be operative and enforceable on January 1st.
So they should all register before January 1st?
Can you repeat that?
You mean, they should all register before January 1st?
Yep, and and that lead time gives them the opportunity to do that and to get up to speed with the new rules.
Okay, that's just then amend the motion I made with the, wait, your original? Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so, so I amend my motion to to activate by January 1st, 2020.
Wow, I think six months is too long to wait to have the enforcement capability.
So we'll do that now and then see whether this situation can be resolved under the current ordinance.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
And if that cannot, we will, like Rod suggested, we can come back, have an urgency ordinance, see how we can do some, do it differently.
I don't know. If it could have been resolved under the current ordinance, it would have been already.
No, not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we have to give the city manager some latitude to try to resolve it. But as I say, I'd be happy to take an emergency ordinance to to deal with specific problems for, right?
All right, very good. Darcy, do you have anything?
You don't want to, you don't want to penalize the the good actors, and you want to give them time to respond. You know, we don't want to unduly burden people who think that, you know, they ought to be able to to rent their properties out if they're being responsible, so.
Okay, we have a lot more to go. Darcy, do you have any comments?
Just that I pointed out some ordinance that that might help the current situation. I'd like to call a question.
Great, wonderful.
Yeah, and I look that our city clerk hasn't conducted the first reading.
And could I ask, excuse me, Vice Mayor, our deputy city attorney to clarify the amendments that would change the operative date in the ordinance as it's presented to council so we can have an accurate first reading?
Yes.
Reflects the proposed amendment?
Thank you, Heather. So the proposed amendment would be to section 13, the effective date. And the language as amended per Councilmember Chow's proposal is, "This ordinance shall take effect 30 days after adoption as provided by Government Code Section 36937. However, the ordinance shall not become operative until January 1st, 2021. The city or its designated will not begin to enforce the provisions and penalties of the ordinance until that date."
And then before I, let me withdraw my call of the question. I'd like to make a friendly amendment that Councilmember Chow included in her motion that the proposed ordinance is exempt from CECL.
Oh, yeah, accepted.
And Rod, you as second, accept that amendment?
You betcha.
Okay, great. Now I call a question.
Vice Mayor Paul, actually, if you could include to also read the ordinance by title only and that the city clerk's reading would constitute the first reading thereof, or or Councilmember Chow to include that amendment coming in her motion.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make another friendly amendment to that effect. And I'll note that before we vote, you do need to conduct the first reading. So sorry, we have to, so Councilmember Chow, do you accept that language as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And Councilmembers?
Yes.
That's great. So I think we're ready. Please conduct the first reading.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-2200, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.12 Transient Occupational Tax Revenue and Finance, amending Title V Business License Regulations, Chapter 5.08 Short-Term Rental Activity, amending specified chapters of Title 19 Zoning of the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 19.08 Definitions, Chapter 19.12 Administration, Chapter 19.20 Permitted, Permitted, Conditional, and Excluded Uses in Agricultural and Residential Zones, Chapter 19.120 Home Occupations to Regulate Rental Uses in Residential Zoning Districts. Shall I call the, Mr. Mayor, do a roll call vote?
Yes, of course.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So can I also ask the staff to take the directions from the council in when implementing the policy on that, things that we have mentioned today? I don't need to make a motion on that, right?
No, because we already.
These are administration.
We'll take a look at it. We'll look at it, thank you.
You can do that in council comments, too. Okay, so now we're on to item nine. Approve the renewal of the following fees.
Can I try something here, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before Roger starts. So this is just to renew the following fees. There are no increases. They're exactly the same. So I'm hoping that it's not going to take a 30-minute discussion, so we can speed along. Over to Roger.
Yeah, and in fact, I was, I was, I was going to suggest to council, if it pleased you, we could just forego the short presentation that Ursleb, our environmental programs manager, has put together. And I could just give you a quick recap of what this is. You know, we have the 1992 fee that's been in place, you know, since that time. It's an annual, it's a requirement that that fee get authorized by council before it gets forwarded on to the county so that it can be placed on the, on the tax, the tax roll. Because the fee is collected that way, and we have to get that to the county by August of each year. So the 92 fee, we're asking for it to be authorized with no change. And then the the fee that was approved by the ballots, by the voters on ballot last year, we're also asking that it be authorized with no change in the fee. And we are asking, because that ordinance that we did last year had a, had an audit component to it, we're asking that our existing audit committee review the expenditure and revenue data for the 2019 fee in March of next year. So when we do this same thing, you know, this time next year, it will have been audited, and then we'll just see what increase may be appropriate at that time. Add that into the presentation.
Okay, let's see if there's anyone from the pub, there's nobody from the public with their hand raised. That is good.
I'd like to motion that we adopt resolution 20-089, approving the renewal and collection of the 1992 storm drain fee with no increase in rates for fiscal year 2021. Second, adopt resolution number 20-090, approving the renewal and collection of the 2019 clean water and storm protection fee with no increase in rates for fiscal year 2021. And three, assign the audit committee the task of reviewing externally audited findings regarding the non-point source program on an annual basis. And before I take a second, I just want to make the very brief comment that I appreciate staff's consistent recommendation that we not increase the 2019 protection fee, even though we do, in the authorization, have the ability to do that. I just, you know, I went on the record last year saying that as long as I'm in the office, I wouldn't vote for that percentage increase, and that's consistent with what we've done here. Thanks.
I'll second.
Great, let's have a roll call vote.
Well, do you have any public comment?
Oh, wait, oh, yes, someone just raised their hand. There was no comment a second ago. So number ending in 9413, welcome.
Hi, my name is Linda Stevens, and I have lived in Cupertino all of my life. My mother lives across the street from the 20570 on Sunrise Drive. And I just would like to say that my mother has been staying with us ever since COVID started because of what is going on across the street from from her. And then I have reached out to Philip.
This is not the agenda item we're talking about now.
Oh, okay.
This is the storm, storm drain fees.
I've just been waiting a long time. I know, I know. Okay, sorry. I've just been waiting all night to speak. So I just want to say that I've been working with the code enforcement, Philip, for the last four years. And if we could get more code enforcement in the city of Cupertino, that would be awesome. So I know it's late. I'll just have to attend the next meeting then. There's an emergency ordinance that comes up, so thank you.
I'll be having a meeting with the neighbors on, it looks like, Thursday afternoon.
That's fabulous. Thank you so much for all your effort on the COVID situation.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if you had to put up with that. Thank you, and I'm sorry if you had to put up with that.
No, it's been pretty bad. My mom is staying with me. She's, she's the one that had her house broken into and had her car stolen. And the code enforcement Phillips could certainly tell you that he knows me quite well. And I'm just really, I'm really surprised and very disappointed that the city has known nothing about this when I've worked so diligently with code enforcement to get this resolved. I just can't understand why it never went higher up than the code enforcement. And during COVID-19, I was also told that our code enforcement was also put on hold and that we needed to contact the sheriff's department to resolve some of these issues. And I really feel that it is a direct responsibility of the city to keep their residents safe. So I really am hoping that you guys come to a decision and that it's very favorable. I just really like to see this woman, you know, not being able to rent this property out at all. So anyway, I know it's a long night, and so I look forward to meeting you on Thursday.
See you Thursday.
And, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
So next, we are on to... We didn't vote on this yet, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Yeah, can you conduct the vote, Kirsten?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're on to approving an internal audit charter. Staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Zach Horach, Finance Manager. I will share my screen just briefly. Can everybody see the screen or the title page of the presentation?
Oh, yes. Go to presentation mode.
I'll just do a real high summary, Zach.
I'm going quick. Okay, so looking at just the background of the internal audit function, again, this first had come up in the City Council Work Program for fiscal year 1920, was then incorporated into the 1920 adopted budget. The internal auditor selection process took place again in fiscal year 2019-20. A subcommittee was formed, ultimately selecting Moss Adams as the independent internal auditor. Services for the internal audit function are slated to commence during fiscal year 2020-21. I will move forward past the purpose of an internal audit function. If there are any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them and move straight to the recommended action, which would formally establish the internal audit function for the City of Cupertino and also to conduct the first reading of the ordinance, which would ultimately amend the City Code, Chapter 2.88 Audit Committee, which would effectively add two more duties, powers, and responsibilities. One for recommending the appointment of internal auditors, and then lastly, to review the internal audit reports. And that will conclude the presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm 100% supportive of this. Having, you know, been mayor when we had our embezzlement break, that's something that I've seen as very necessary. And being on the audit committee right now, I realize that we've taken those initial steps. Where do we stand right now on this internal auditor functions act? Because a couple of months ago, when we had our last audit committee meeting, there was an indication that some tangible steps had been taken. So where are we right now? I thought we would be along, but of course, COVID hit. And so have any of those steps been placed on hold at this point?
Right. As of the last audit committee meeting, we had put the kickoff or the commencement of the internal audit services on hold because of COVID-19. We are kind of re-engaging the internal audit firm, or Moss Adams, to commence the services beginning the end of July or early August. So assuming that, that those carry on smoothly and on time, that we would first bring the next report, or the first internal audit report to the audit committee and ultimately, City Council at the October audit committee meeting.
Okay, great. I mean, if we have no attendees that want to speak on it, I would be happy to bring motion to...
Hold on, let me chat. No, no, no one has their hand raised on that.
I'd be happy to bring the motion to approve the staff recommendation.
And I would like to second, also recognizing the leadership of our long chair of the Audit Committee, Ino Schmidt, who has felt strongly for a long time that this was an important step, and he really has been a pillar. And I know, yeah, Darcy and I have both served on this committee over a number of years, so.
We both serve on it now, so.
Yes, we do.
Yes, I have served on it in the past as well, and it's, it's a difficult committee to serve on if you're not an accountant, I think. It's a lot to learn.
A lot of beans to count.
Yep, so, yeah, let's conduct the first reading then.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-2208, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code, Chapter 2.88 Audit Committee, 100 Duties, Powers, Responsibilities.
Okay, well, let me, let me amend the language of my motion. So I move that we adopt resolution number 20-091 and that ordinance number 20-2208 be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof. And so Councilmember Sinks, if you would second that.
You bet, I second that.
Okay, thank you.
Formally.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wow, we're just going through these really fast. We're going to be done by 2:00 AM, I think.
Shocked. On item number 11, if we're ready to go there?
Yes, we are.
I'd like to try the same thing. This is the Lawrence Midy property procurement or acquisition, and this is simply the next step. So that's what I would say to council is that I think everybody's aware of the acquisition process. This is just the next step in that process, and everything's moving.
I just have a couple of questions, Madam City Manager. We did receive one email kind of questioning the wisdom of the acquisition. I want to address a couple of the concerns that the resident raised. One of them was that we would be spending a little less than $3 million at this time. And I just want to clarify the fact that this is not general fund money. This is money that has been specifically set aside already five years ago for the acquisition of this property as well as the development of it. And so we're well underneath that amount of money. However, that money, and please, you know, clarify it, is specifically for parks in that area of the city. Is that, is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, I think Chad is here to confirm that.
It's part of a parkland...
Parkland fee money, is that right?
Then it's parkland fee money that was provided to the city due to the Apple Campus Project. There was parkland that was designated, or there was land that was designated as parkland on the east side of the city. And with the creation of that campus, they provided us money to purchase other parklands. The intent at that point in time was for it to be on the east side of the town.
Great, thank you so much. And so my second question that this resident brought up was the issue of the homeless and potential encampments. I just want to clarify that, you know, from our perspective, it actually would decrease that possibility if you had movement, you know, within that parcel. And I also want to point out that we have had encampments, in fact, in that enclosed space, you know, precisely because it is not as well populated or monitored. Is that, is that also correct?
I think that's true. You just don't have, prior to the acquisition, you don't have movement there, as you put it, you know.
Right, yeah, once there's active use, that discourages that sort of thing.
Absolutely. And then my final, my final point was that the resident brought up the fact that this is currently in San Jose. However, it is our intention to approach the operative authority and...
LAFCO.
Cupertino, no, LAFCO, thank you. Local Agency Formation Committee or Commission, I forget which. But we're intending to approach LAFCO, and we're not anticipating issues with regard to the annexation of this space into Cupertino. Is that correct?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, we are not anticipating any, any opposition at this point in time.
Excellent. Okay, that's...
Okay, I may, I do have two speakers that wish to speak on this as well. So I will welcome former Mayor Dolly Sandoval, welcome.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks also to you council members and staff for your endurance this evening. I appreciate the time that you're giving me to speak on issue, item 11 here. When I ran for City Council back in 2001, I heard from many residents in that Rancho Rinconada area, and which I live very close to, tell me time and time again that we're underparked over there. And so at that time, I got busy on the council and my colleagues and the taxpayers here in the City of Cupertino set aside money. We bought the parcel for Sterling Barnhart Park and developed that nice pocket park for the residents to have. I see this extension with the Lawrence Midy property as just a natural continuation of that park. And I appreciate years and years and years and years later that we're coming to fruition here. And having roads and airport, have their stuff moved off the property, doing a swap with San Jose Water, having the county put this up for sale, and now the city finally, in the CIP budget, bringing this forward for possible resolution and for us to buy it and develop another park area over there. I'm excited that this is on the agenda this evening and I've been tracking this. I also want to thank you, Vice Mayor Paul, for keeping me in the loop. I know I bug you continuously about where are we in this process. And I'm appreciative of your email earlier today reminding me that this is on the agenda tonight. Years ago, Lisa Keelog and I, who was the Director of County Parks for Santa Clara County, she and I set off on a path to get the city to obtain this property. Lisa passed away a couple of years ago, but I know she's, she's looking down from the heavens tonight and taking note that we're one step further towards claiming this property as our own and continually, continuing to build this park there in the easternmost part of our city. So thanks again, and I hope you approve this measure this evening as per the staff report.
Thanks, thanks so much. I'm wondering if you remember, and it's been a 20-year process now from what you're describing.
Yeah.
You remember about eight or nine years into that, one of your first actions as mayor was interviewing and selecting me onto the Parks and Recreation Commission in 2008.
And I didn't have a litmus test for you, but I'm pretty sure I did ask you, what do you think about the park space there in eastern Cupertino? So, no, I appreciate you following this and keeping tabs on it and pushing it and particularly appreciate the county finally relenting in helping us create a solution here where we can expand park space here in Cupertino.
Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Dolly. And next, we have Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer. Uh, let's see, okay, Jennifer, go.
Uh, yes, hi, could you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, yes, hi, this is Jennifer Griffin, and I am so excited that we're finally getting this piece of property. They first, the neighborhood first started getting it, trying to get it in the 1980s. Pat Bustamante was instrumental in working on it through the 90s. As Dolly said, this was something that wanted to come to fruition for many, many years. I'll put a plug in for former City Manager Dave Knapp. And I think it was about 2009, he actually did the initial pre-annexations of this piece of property. We are very, very excited to have it come in as parkland. To me, this is one of the most, this is the second park that Rancho has gotten. And this, and if I tell you things in my life that I'm going to look back on, this is a watershed for me. That I feel now that the eastern boundaries of the city are complete because this property has been secured, it will be protected, it is parkland. And I look at it as a logical extension of Cupertino's eastern boundary. We will have complete control to the center of Lawrence Expressway now so that as the San Jose Urban Village for Lawrence comes in, we will have a fighting chance to come to the table with or against San Jose. That's just, because I live on the east side, these are things that are important to us. But I, I am very, very happy that you all are able to do this. My thanks to Apple. It was a long fight. This is the second park we have gotten for the eastern side, and I hope we get a third. But thank you very much. Please vote this in. Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Rod, go ahead. Whoops.
Oh, he's muted, too.
All right, I'm trying to unmute him, okay. All right, there you go.
Thank you. I've had some concerns, mostly because this piece of land is so isolated and it's right on Lawrence Expressway. But I understand the long-term effort, and I appreciate the public comment we've received, including from, from two residents. So I will support this. I would say that with remaining funds, we have a total of $8 million, and we're dedicating about three of it for this, for land acquisition, and then there, of course, will be money in improvement. I would be very interested to see, given, given CUSD's financial struggles, if we might use some of that $8 million to see if CSD would like to turn the property near Sedgwick also into parkland. So I would just offer that as another use for the money. I think that, that piece of property is, while smaller, is more ideally situated in the middle of the residential community there on the east. So those are my thoughts.
I'm, you know, I'm supportive of the sentiment. And I'll move that the City Council adopt resolution number 20-092, approving the purchase of the Lawrence Midy property located along the westernly right of way of Lawrence Expressway between Calvert Drive and Bollinger Road, without reading the APN numbers, which are listed on the agenda, from the accounting of Santa Clara in the amount of $2.69 million and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and take all necessary steps to complete the acquisition of the property.
Okay.
Councilmember Chow?
Um, yeah?
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye, well, thank you.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yay. Wow, and for, this just shows how long it takes to get some things done. It's just, it's painstakingly slow for so many things.
This is, this is a landmark point in time. It really is. I mean, it's just, it's such a pivotal piece of property as well. And I want to thank everyone for making this happen. It did take a long time, you know. But thank you.
I, yeah, I think, then, Darcy, it really shows your leadership. You are making the library expansion project happen, and you are making the Midy, Lawrence Park project happening. So, and this, this one especially, it has a lot of difficulties. And then you have shown your leadership. your leadership and then worked with everyone to get this through. And the staff, thank you, the staff. I know that the staff also has to go through a lot of difficulties with this project.
Okay, let's move on and finish the meeting.
Kirsten, summarize, man.
Item 12. You're muted, Kirsten.
I have a three-minute presentation, I'll go quickly through it.
Okay.
Stay with me.
Try to do it in 180 seconds.
Okay. Okay, so, this is, this is proposing a chap, adding a chapter to the Cupertino municipal code requiring electronic filing for campaign statements. The city clerk's office currently accepts only paper filings. The draft ordinance is consistent with government code, which allows local government agencies to mandate electronic filing or e-filing for an elected officer, candidate, or committee. As further required by state law, the system is compatible with the Secretary of State's e-filing system. It has safeguards to protect the integrity of the data being transmitted, and it is available free of charge for filers. The FPPC, or Fair Political Practices Commission, encourages moving from paper-based reporting to transparent online disclosure. E-filing is easier for officials to comply with reporting obligations. It provides publicly accessible information in a consistent format. And numerous cities, our neighboring cities are using electronic filing. There are many more listed in the staff report, but just listed a few here. Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Sunnyville, just to name a couple. And then I wanted to provide an update. On May 5, May 5, the council requested a website tracking mechanism to list campaign finance data in a more comprehensive manner than searching through individual filings. Our IT applications division has developed an application for tracking contributions and expenditures for candidates and committees. It tracks, it extracts data from campaign statements, filings, and provides a summary report of campaign financial activity. Of note, this application does require a manual process of inputting data from paper filings to prepare this report. The e-filing system, once it's up and running, will generate automated reports, so will require less staff time. And the application dashboard will be available on the city website late July. So if council wishes to move forward with this proposed ordinance, your action tonight is to receive this update and conduct the first reading of the ordinance. And that's it, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten. And I am just thrilled that the campaign finance data will be online, because that is a big step forward in transparency for anyone that's tried to go back and look at campaign finance data, handwritten, unreadable, incomplete. I think this is just a huge step forward, so thank you.
Thanks to our IT department, I have to say, Bill Mitchell and his team.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. And are there any public comments, Mayor?
Let me look for public comments. Hold on, Leon. No, there are not. Go ahead, so council, councilmember Chow?
A question, so for a candidate, what would they, I know that right now they need to fill out an online form for FPPC. It wasn't easy to use, I heard, or my treasurer did it, but then it wasn't easy. So, but then they generate a PDF form submitted to the city. Anything extra that candidates will need to do for our online form? Do they need to re-enter everything to our online form?
We are going to import all of any previously filed committees and candidates, we're going to import that information ahead of time. So, all the way back from 2016, we'll have that, it'll automatically populate the cover page, and it'll do, it'll make the calculations automatically for the filer, and it'll, it'll provide reminders. So it'll actually make it much easier to comply with filing requirements.
So, you mean this tool has the ability to scan previous PDF files?
The application that
Generate data?
No, actually, so previous filings, we are manually importing that data line by line for, into the IT application, and then that will display on the dashboard for people to view on the website. So is that
And for the, for this year, I mean, for the, for this year's election, what the candidate will need to do to use the city system? Do they have to enter all the data into the, a new online system, besides the FPPC online system? Or can they download, I think they can print out the PDF from the FPPC and just send it to the city?
They, yes, they can, they can download from the FPPC website, complete the form, and the city staff will, will upload that document, redact the information, upload it to the city website, as we have been doing in the past, and then we will also import that information into the new, the new e-filing system for the filer.
So the candidate first enter information into FPPC, download the PDF, I guess, and then send the PDF to the city. Then the city has a tool now to parse that PDF
Yes, exactly.
To, to our own online tool.
Correct.
It's really odd how come FPPC doesn't just make their database available, then we don't have to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's great.
Let Kirsten conduct the first reading of the ordinance, please.
Certainly. This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-2209, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, adding city code section 2.20.120, electronic filing, to Title II, administration and personnel related, relating to electronic filing of campaign statements.
All right, we'd like to move that the ordinance number 20-2209 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Actually, we are back on time amazingly. So now it is time for council and staff comments and future agenda items. Do we have any staff comments?
Let's stay on time.
Well, thank you, Deb, but I really appreciate you taking the lead and meeting with the people on Sunrise.
No problem. My job.
And, and I am a little disappointed that, and one of the residents there mentioned it, you know, how did we never hear about this before? We don't hear about code enforcement things, but maybe we should when it's this egregious.
Yeah, well, that would be also inclusive of me. So the, when I heard about it was just as those emails were emerging to council, I was getting copies on it, so I inquired. And really, it had to do with two things. The Muni Code doesn't have a lot of teeth, the current Muni Code, to help us enforce. And two, it just got so egregious quickly in this last phase. We thought, code enforcement thought that they had it addressed, and it just has not been addressed. Then come to find out, there's fines that have not been paid, and there's no way for us to put a lien on the property, so there's all this stuff coming out. So in the future, I think staff now knows that we can take a more assertive approach as far as the Muni Code supports us acting. It was not, it was probably a legacy management issue before.
Okay.
Right, so.
So I'm confused, what kind of state law would prohibit cities from having the ability to
I don't know.
I mean, we're, we're not forcing someone to sell their house so we can collect it, but
I don't know.
This is very odd.
My office can provide a follow-up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I found out just as you guys were, and just as council was, and they were surprised that I wanted to take a more assertive approach, which tells me previous times, we're just trying to limp it along, and so it's just a completely different management philosophy.
So I think this also says
Can we, either, I mean, I think there'll be follow-ups to council members, this isn't a, thank you.
Okay, so does anyone else, are there any other staff comments?
No, nothing from me.
Or council comments or future agenda items?
So I have some comments. I think I have requested that, there are some certain operational items, such as code enforcement, such as other things that's operational. I think the council needs a summary. If we can have a biannual summary of here are all what's happening, then maybe then we would, we can, this maybe pointed out. And maybe the staff needs to understand that when this is repeated, have occurrence, what they should do. Maybe the staff didn't know they could, they should have alerted, elevated the issue earlier, right? So there probably should have a process that the staff should be able to follow. You know, like our BOP report, you have level one, level two, three, and then CID, which is customer in distress.
I would ask that, I would ask that, since code enforcement falls squarely in the city manager's job, I would ask that you just allow me to have an escalation process that's intolerable until we have to address it differently.
Yeah, so then that would be great. I think this is not just this one, it's maybe, there are other operational issues that if we can get some updates on. And for example, my, what I mean, other operational items, for example, the city has funded the route to school, audit item, to do some improvement around schools, and I think we allocated a new funding of, I don't remember, 120,000 or 250,000?
No, it was overcome by the budget that was given to us by the Apple dollars, so that's
Yeah, we funded before Apple, since Apple said they all fund that too. But the thing is, I don't know what happened, what we are doing with that every year. I think it was funded since 2008 or earlier, it was before I got here. And, but once it's operational, we don't hear any updates. So it would be nice to have those too. And then another thing that I found out, I think I mentioned earlier, that library commission is confused on what they could, they are allowed to put on their, like, work program. There is a confusion between, whether I, when I, the city war, city council work program, our work program that this council usually is new initiative, that the council would like to work on for the next year, right? But then there are some operational items, like the point to lower it, or each commission have their own other operational items, that the, the commission should still be allowed to, or even are required to work on these items. These are separate from city initiatives. Therefore, they shouldn't be cut out of a commission work program. So for example, like the, the library access issue, that actually the library commission was actively working on it this past few months, and now they are being told, no, you cannot work on that. So I don't know what's the communication here, because, yeah, it's not the library program, but it's related. I think they should be allowed to also work on an item that's on the city council work program or operational item that's related to their commission. And then if they would like to provide input on, they, they should be allowed to put it on their program, or any item that they would like to work on without using any city staff resource, they should be allowed to put on their, their own work program that's separate from the council work program. So I think that there is a confusion, they have, their program have to be a subset of the council work program. I think that's not true. Their, their program is a subset of the council work program that's new initiative plus operational items or items of interest for them.
Okay, is there anybody else with
Do we agree on that? Because I think there is a confusion in, in, in the implementation or messages from staff.
Yes, I agree.
Well, we can't, we can't make a discussion right now.
Right, yeah, we can't discuss this, okay.
So, do I need to schedule, oh, you can email Deb, I don't think we need to schedule a council agenda item for this.
Okay, Rob, what did you have?
Yeah, I know the city's association is likely to take up, possible endorsement of the schools and communities first initiative, and I think, I think it might be appropriate for us to have that discussion at a council meeting first.
Okay, I thought, can councils take positions on ballot measures like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I, I do notice that
Where?
Excuse me, thank you. The League of California Cities has come out against it, which I thought was kind of odd.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would, I'll, I'll be happy to put that on the agenda.
I appreciate it. I think it's a, you know, worthy discussion, and we can get experts to come in and talk to us about it if we like, so.
Well, I know we all, we've already had Larry Stone come in and talk about it.
Yeah, there are folks from working partnerships that would be happy to come and address questions. And actually, there's substantial revenue that would come in to the city of Cupertino on the, I think it's on the order of 5 million, 4.9 million, something like that. But we could get that information, I think, you got, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Rob, can you repeat that, the city's association action on what?
Schools and communities first.
We had the discussion in
For the ballot.
Yeah, we had a discussion at the city's association at a presentation, and in addition to funding schools more robustly, substantially more robustly, it would fund local government. And I think the estimate of the city of Cupertino shares on the order of 4.9 million in the first year, so.
Okay.
But I don't think we ought to talk about it more if we're willing to
Right, yeah, we're going to adjournize, but we can't discuss it here.
Right.
Anything else?
I'm done, thank you.
What?
Yes.
Okay, go, John.
So, I've had, you know, a number of, of questions over the last year and a half now, and Councilman Chow has also had similar questions. And so the two of us met with Barbara Cross of Gulf Harbor Litman, and were able to have a good conversation with her and ask her a lot of these questions. Couple words on her, apparently she was a planner for 25 to 30 years, and then decided to go and get her law degree. So she's able to talk about both the planning aspect and the legal aspect, which really helped our understanding of, when we have to make decisions up here, what's the process? What can we expect for guidance? What options we should have? What can be deferred? It was tremendous, it was helpful. I would like to ask that the city manager make the same hour of information, same hour meeting for the planning chair and vice chair, so that they have the same type of knowledge. It's vital to making the correct decisions for our residents and our community. So an hour of time to increase their understanding of how to get things done and what they should and how to get it done, great. So I'm making that request. Do I have anybody else that supports?
I, yeah, no, that'd be
Yeah, I already support it.
Pretty good, okay.
I would just, I would
But we cannot vote here.
Well, it's, it's an hour of time to
She has limited representation that she's provided the city, and so it's not just up to us. It's up to her as well.
Okay, well, the city manager and city attorney can look into that.
Yeah, and she's happy to talk to them.
Okay.
So So...
Anything else?
Do you have anything? I have one thing.
All right, all right, be brief, please, it's after midnight.
So the traffic demand management analysis that we just heard from the staff, it wasn't really parking, it was really traffic demand management. And then I find out, it doesn't fall under any commission. No one, no commission is responsible to advise us on that.
That's because it's staff work. Transportation is staff work.
But traffic demand management requires a lot of community engagement.
Right, well, we tried to form a, we tried to form a transportation commission without...
So shouldn't that fall under maybe planning for now?
No, it's not in their scope.
It's not under their scope? This is transportation. But I think BikePad actually already have transportation under, in their, in their function. I remember when I checked it. And then if none of the commission is responsible, right now, I think we, as a council, can designate one commission or even two, to help the staff think of better traffic demand management process, right? So maybe let's put that on the next, if this, we need to make a decision on which commission we should help us, advise us on that, then I propose an agenda, to agendize this. Or the staff can do some research, it might already fall under something.
So you are correct, the BikePad Commission makes recommendations regarding city, am I muted?
No, we can hear you.
Oh, I can, yeah.
Makes, regarding city transportation matters.
Yeah.
Including parking, including parking.
Yeah, that's why I remember last time I was, I didn't, I thought, that's already part of it.
So, yeah.
So maybe BikePad Commission can help advise on TDM issues.
Yeah, if they're interested in doing that, sure.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. Bye. Bye. See you all in a few hours.
Night.
What?
Bye.